Good evening Cedar Falls and welcome to our regular city council meeting for April 4th, 2022. I'll now call this meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Schultz.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Ganfield.
Here.
Sires.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Grab my agenda here. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from March 21st?
So moved. Second.
Motion in second and all in favor, or excuse me, there's any comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda revisions tonight?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you. So the one item I have for special presentation tonight is just a proclamation recognizing April 7th through 23rd, 2022 as Citywide Cleanup Week. And that proclamation reads, "Whereas the proper disposal of trash, appliances, furniture, hazardous materials, and electronics is vital to the safety, health, and welfare of Cedar Falls residents, and whereas pristine parks, sidewalks, roadways, waterways, and public spaces are a great source of enjoyment and pride for residents and visitors alike, and whereas the city's neighborhood associations and service clubs have successfully carried out past spring cleanup events throughout the city, and these efforts are most worthy of celebration and duplication citywide, and whereas the city of Cedar Falls, the city's neighborhood associations, Green Iowa Americor, and other environmentally minded civic organizations are providing resources, education, and materials for a successful cleanup of Cedar Falls and the days surrounding Earth Day on April 22nd, now therefore I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim April 17th through 23rd, 2022, as Citywide Cleanup Week throughout the city, and I encourage citizens to organize and participate in cleanup events and to take advantage of this opportunity to easily dispose of refuse, bulk items, electronics, and hazardous materials for the betterment of our city and the environment. Sign this 29th day of March, 2022, Mayor Robert M. Green." So typically we'll have a person coming forward to receive the proclamation. This is the entire city that is part of this as well, so I'll give this proclamation to the entire city. We will have a note from Public Works, if that's okay, later this evening, or would you want to just do that now, Director Schragi, just to say how cleanup week? Sorry, I put you on the spot there. I do, I have the press release about.
Sure. I guess any organizations or groups that would like to come forward for a specific corridor, we'll provide gloves and bags, pick up locations to pick up the bags after they're done with that. We also are scheduling some city staff on the afternoon of the April 21st on select corridors to do cleanup as well.
And there are organizations like North Cedar Neighborhood Association has had a cleanup event for years, and they're doing theirs on the 23rd up in North Cedar. So if you are looking for organizations to join in with, I would definitely check with neighborhood associations and areas around, or just bring together some friends and family and go out on your own in your neighborhood. So.
Can I clarify something?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. Did I see it though, like if an individual wants to do it, they can come to, they can come to Public Works and then drop them off at like certain park shelters, right? During that week? Is, did I see that wrong on the Facebook page?
As far as bags and things after they're done?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
There'll be select areas where if we know the area where they're collecting the garbage, if we know where they're dropping those bag locations, we can pick them up.
Yeah, and it says in the press release, "Once filled, the blue bags can be deposited near the shelter areas at Overman Park, Holmes Park, Clay Street Park, Serly Park, Neighbors Park, and Pfeiffer Park, and then other areas, just contact Public Works at 273-8629 to arrange a special pickup." So thank you very much for that clarification. And with that, that takes us over into public forum, where speakers have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. So does anyone from the gallery wish to speak on a topic tonight? Ms. Beach, name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Rosemary Beach, 5018 Sage Road, Western Home Village, and I'm back again with a little information on the house, Serly House up at UNI. This is the new UNI book for the alumni, and it's very well done, and it has a wonderful article in here. It says, "Preserving Faith." And they're working on a church in Waterloo to preserve it. I think that's quite lovely of them. These are a few of the highlights of what's in here. Planning has since been underway on how to properly restore its iconic architecture and utilize the space mindfully. This is for the church in Waterloo. Thanks to the guidance of key members from the Coalition and the University of Northern Iowa. Two people from the UNI Institute are working on it. Several UNI professors have also been involved in the process as coordinator of the UNI's interior design. The possibilities for student participation is noted. Programming support has only grown from there. Let's see, to learn about the history and culture and community right where they're learning is wonderful. This is our role as educators to help co-create with students lived experience where they can learn and grow. Down here it says, "There is a rich history in Cedar Valley, even on this campus." Well, that's not well documented, commented one student. As future educators, we want to help tell our students about the history of their own community. Down here further, "We need the hard truth about what's going on with this building." That's the one in Waterloo. Then, "What does the community want?" They want suggestions, is what he wants. And lastly, in a large picture showing the inside of the church, "This is our role as educators to help co-create with the students' lived experiences where they can learn and grow." So I think that's quite interesting. So they were asking, hey, what do you want to see done with the building? So they're giving you an opportunity to let the students know what you'd like to be done with that building in Waterloo. And I said, just quickly said, I got home before this was open last time, and I had a feeling there was questions about why on earth I am up here doing this during weekly meetings, because this is the one place I can get the information out. I'm very interested in historical preservation. I was on the first board. I think it's important to our city to note that. So I'm simply saying one good thing did happen. If you notice, you did, one of your council people asked for the university to come and talk this with you for one evening. I don't think that's ever happened. Somebody who's maybe older than I would know, but that's questionable. So in any intent, something has come of it, and I hope it is the.
Okay, seeing none. So I'll read those items. Seven is approving recommendations of the mayor relative to appointment of members to boards and commissions, and I do very much want to thank them for their service. Item eight is receiving and filing city council work session minutes of March 21st. Nine is receiving a communication, filing a communication from Civil Service Commission relative to the certified list for the position of a maintenance worker. Ten is receiving and filing departmental month reports for February 2022, and then eleven is approving applications for beer permits and liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve these items?
So moved. Second.
Motion in second and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Those do pass collectively and takes us to the resolution calendar. These items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does any council member request to pull an item 12 through 18? Seeing none. Does anyone from the public request to pull an item 12 through 18? Seeing none? Then I'll read those items as well. Twelve is a resolution approving and accepting four permanent public access easements for the River Place Properties LC. Thirteen is a resolution approving and authorizing expenditure of funds for the purchase of a dump truck chassis for the Public Works Department. Fourteen is a resolution approving and authorizing expenditure of funds for the purchase of a generator for the Water Reclamation Division. Fifteen is a resolution receiving and filing bids and approving and accepting the low bid of Owen Contracting for the Lake Street Trail Project. Sixteen is a resolution approving and accepting the contract and bond of Municipal Pipe Tool Company for the 2022 CDBG Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Seventeen is resolution receiving and filing and setting April 18th as the date of a public hearing for the proposed plan specifications form of contract and estimate of cost for the West 27th Street Reconstruction Project. Eighteen is a resolution setting April 18th, 2022 as the date of a public hearing for the proposed conveyance of interest in certain real estate to Cedar Falls Community School District. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield.
Aye.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Harding.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us over to ordinances, which nineteen is passing an ordinance amending Chapter 11 Housing of the Code of Ordinances relative to the Housing Commission upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Motion in seconded. If we could get a 30-second infomercial from staff just on what this generally does, would that be Director Sheets?
Sure. What you have in the packet is a proposal for the Housing Commission to reduce from seven to five members, and that's related to, actually when we were looking into it, part of it was a little bit about getting people to participate and getting enough board and commission members, but then when we started to look into it, our planning staff saw that by state code, actually based on our population, we had too many members altogether. So this will help us comply with state code as well as hopefully allow us to have a full commission.
Thank you. Any council discussion on this? Any from the public? Okay, so it's been motion and seconded to pass ordinance amending Chapter 11 relative to the Housing Commission upon its first consideration, and this requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield.
Aye.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Harding.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then the last ordinance is twenty, passing the ordinance amending Chapter 23 Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances relative to prohibiting parking for the College Hill Farmers Market upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Motion in seconded. Again, a little infomercial from staff, just to say what this is going to be about.
Mr. Mayor, we were, we received a request from the College Hill Farmers Market and also the College Hill Partnership, basically just changing the day from Thursdays to Wednesdays. They thought it would be a better fit for them, so. And I believe we may have someone here from the Farmers Market as well, so.
Okay, to answer questions. All right, excellent. So do we have any questions for staff or for our rep? Okay. Then with that, it's been motioned and seconded, and, or anything for the public I should ask to, I'm sorry. Okay, so no comments from the public. Motion in seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield.
Aye.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Harding.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we go over to bills and claims. Is there a motion to allow bills and claims for April 4th?
Second.
Motion in seconded. Any discussion from council and from the public? Okay, seeing none, then motion in second and it requires a roll call vote.
Ganfield.
Aye.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Harding.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any council referrals tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to put a little quick.
I just want to put a little quick thank you and plug. So I, this Saturday, had the honor of riding around with police, with Lieutenant Marty Beckner, for what would be my third ride-along. So I've done all three shifts. I started with a third shift ride-along. I did a second shift, and then I did a Saturday first shift. Thankfully, it was a pretty uneventful shift, but it was all, continues to be, I learn best by immersing myself in, you know, a job obviously I don't do. I feel like that's good for me as a councilperson, but also good for me as a citizen, to just be reminded of what our police officers do every day and have a good conversation with staff. This Wednesday, I will hang out with FIRE for their regularly scheduled training. This will be the second training I've been privileged to hang out with them. This past Saturday, as I was getting there, FIRE had gone out, I believe on a call. I think there was a car in the ditch or something Saturday morning. Anyway, they, FIRE staff was also there, getting their equipment put back and ready for the next call. So I guess my main thing is, is I want to thank staff, first of all, for having me. I don't know why I always get nervous that I'm bothering them, but they always assure me I'm not. And I also want to make sure that I encourage, you know, as this conversation continues about our public safety department, which is so vital to our community safety, I hope to encourage all of us to take some time to make sure we're hanging out and, you know, taking time with the staff who our decisions directly impact. So just a little blurb there.
Thank you. And that is part of the strategic plan for public safety, that they, one of the items is to have elected officials encourage officials to ride along. So certainly to Councilmember Dunn's point, it's not a bother at all, but an important oversight sense to be able to get out and see what they do every day. So very much encourage that for council to get involved with that, if we haven't done so yet. They don't even charge you.
No.
Any other council updates?
I wanted to say one thing. I was trying to find the date, but I couldn't find it. But wanted to say a big thanks to Catherine Sogard, because she's resigning or resigned freshly from the College Hill Partnership. So I know she
The last day is the 19th.
Yeah, it's coming up soon. That's why I was trying to find that. But either way, I just wanted to say thanks for all the service, and it was great to work with her.
Absolutely. Other updates?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Sires?
I have a shout-out for Dan Oswigand and his crew. They run the North Cedar Food Pantry. And tomorrow, they'll be open from 12 to 2:00. So if you know anybody that could use the food pantry, it's an awesome place. They've got plenty of stuff. They're at the Church of the Nazarene on Lone Tree Road. Anybody, or if you know anybody that could use something like that, I encourage them to stop out. They're a great crew out there, and I want to thank them very much. That's all.
Super. You know, I've wondered for a while, like for city council updates, what the point of that was? But it sounds like this is, it's almost like council shout-outs. So I think that's a good way to use the time. I hope we keep looking at it that way. And I'll put a note out or shout-out. This Saturday, past Saturday, I had the opportunity to do a tour of the National Guard Armory right next to the Waterloo Airport. We have Cedar Falls residents who are participating in the National Guard, and was very thankful for the chance to spend a couple hours out with them during their monthly training to get a better sense of what some of their needs are and how they impact our community and the state and the nation. Colonel Gingrich, Garrett Gingrich is the battalion commander, and he'll be here in June to just give a council a quick brief on what the National Guard is doing these days here in Iowa. And that'll be as part of the Iron Man Battalion Day that we celebrate in July each year now. So looking forward to continuing a good, positive, healthy relationship with the National Guard, and certainly want to thank those who are here tonight, who served in the Guard. I'm looking at you, Chief Birdy. Acting Director Birdy, and others who have made such a big difference in our community in uniform. So do we have any UNI updates that you want to present tonight, Zachary? Okay. You have one more, one more opportunity. So your next meeting will be your final meeting with us. So I hope you've enjoyed your time here on council with us. So we look forward to next week, and if you have a next time, and certainly feel free to brief us at that time as well. So with that, any, anything else from council? Staff updates tonight? Anything around?
Thanks, sir.
Okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a terrific week.